I'd like to call the Mammell City Council meeting to order. Need to let you know that Alderman Kelly is out of town tonight and he will not be with us. And then, at this time, we will have the invocation and pledge of allegiance and I'm gonna lead us in that. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day, Lord, and we're thankful for this community in which we live and represent, Lord. We'd ask you to be with our council members as they do your business here, Lord, and give them the wisdom that they need to conduct the city's business, Lord. We'd ask you to be with those families that are grieving tonight, Lord. We had the Yale County Sheriff's Deputy Lieutenant Mainheart that was killed last week and his services were today. We'd ask you to bless his family and be with all of our law enforcement personnel, Lord. As of today is Law Enforcement Memorial Day, we need to remember all those that have paid the ultimate sacrifice for our liberty, Lord. We'd ask you to be with our servicemen and women overseas, Lord, and protect them. We'd also ask you to be with Pastor David Ward's family as he passed away last week, Lord. We'd ask you to be with his family and comfort them as only you can. As we leave here today, Lord, help us to be an encouragement to those around us and bless those that we come in contact with. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no special announcements or guests tonight, and so at this time, you have a copy of the May 1st minutes in your packet. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a minor tweak there. Under Mayor's comments on page two of the minutes, when I was speaking to the resident of Windsor, who mentioned no notification was given about the parking lot flooding, he was referring to the apartment management. So if there's a way to insert that, was given by the apartment management about the parking lot flooding, that would be more accurate, because this indicated he might have been blaming the city, but he was actually upset with the apartment management. Thank you.
Do I need to make a motion on that?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we insert those words.
There's been a motion and a second made to insert apartment management in the statement about the parking lot flooding. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, the minutes are amended. Is there any other corrections or amendments? Not entertaining a motion to approve as amended?
Still moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the May 1st minutes as amended? Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment, and we have one public comment card that's not on agenda items, so we'll hear from that individual at this time. Ms. Ashley Camplain? If you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Ashley Camplain, and I live at Two Platt Drive in Riverland. I also own some rental property here in Mammell. I've lived here for about 10 years, a couple different homes, and I love this town. But a couple weeks ago, when we had the flooding, my new home flooded. And that's not y'all's problem. But I've had three different contractors come out, and all of them have said the same thing, is that there's not storm drains where there need to be now with the development that's taking place in Riverland. There's, at the bottom of my street, which is Platt Drive, Platt Drive also drains directly into my yard. And there's storm drains down that hill on each side, but there's nothing at the bottom. I'm just asking for you guys to look into that for me. I don't know what the regulations are, I don't know how often, how many years that has to change. But I'm not the only one there. I just felt like I needed to bring that to your attention. The neighbor across the street, it's draining into his pool. His pool is what saved his home this time. So it's becoming a newer issue with the development in there. So I'm just asking for you guys to please look into it for those of us that live in that area.
I know that our Public Works interim director, Mr. Hogan, has been out there and looked at it, and it was a discussion at the city engineers' meeting.
Okay.
So we are looking into the issue. Now, we have done some drainage work in that area
Okay.
in the past few years. Further down, I'm aware of, but I'm not aware of any recent development that's occurred in that direct area, but we can look at it.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'd appreciate that.
Okay.
All right? That's it. Thank you for your time.
What was the address?
It's Two Platt Drive.
Two Platt Drive. Thank you.
With no other public comments, we'll move on to the rest of the agenda. Next item is financial statement review. And since we've lost our finance director, we're trying to play catch-up a little bit. But Ms. Thompson is going to come back later this week to help and hopefully assist Ms. Timmons in trying to get some knowledge on how to do those before we have our next meeting. That's the goal, is to have them at the next meeting. Because it's not just a matter of hitting a button and they come out. It takes a little bit of work, and since we've been without a finance director only two weeks, it was a short time period to try to get that done. And so, but Ms. Thompson is coming out this week and they're gonna start working on that. So we hope to have those at the next meeting. No promises, but we hope to, so we'll do our best. Next item is procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight.
Still moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Next item is unfinished business. We have the third reading ordinance number 934 enacting supplemental provisions of city code. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 934, an ordinance adopting and enacting the supplemental provisions of the Mammell City Code for the City of Mammell, Arkansas, providing for the manner of amending such code and providing when such code and this ordinance shall become effective.
This is on third reading, so a motion is in order.
I may.
Alderman Saunders?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 934.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to the council approval ordinance number 934. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Vaprazan?
Yes.
Alderman Hope?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next item under our new business is the first reading of ordinance number 935, amending the prohibited uses in an I-1 zone. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Be it enacted in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 935, an ordinance amending the use restriction for I-1 industrial park district zoning district to prohibit refining and storage of ethanol and other dangerous, injurious, noxious, or otherwise objectionable substances that may create a condition related to fire, explosion, radioactivity, noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, other forms of air pollution disturbances, electrical or otherwise, glare, heat, hazardous waste, or other objectionable elements in a manner or amount to adversely affect the health and safety in the surrounding area.
Okay, this is an ordinance that came about because of kind of what happened last year. It's what is gonna be the next substance or chemical or created product or whatever that could cause concerns for residents that would be located here. And so, this came before the planning commission. They passed it on to the city council with approval. I mean, they approved it, but they passed it on to the city council for approval. But in this language, there's all kinds of ways to write it, and I know that Mr. City Attorney and I, we spent a lot of time trying to figure out how to define it, how to, or not how to define it, but how to regulate it and list. And we would even say, well, let's give a certain amount that you can't have more than this amount. Well, but you don't, that's not the same for every product or every chemical. So basically, it's written in such a way that it gives the planning commission the authority then to allow it to be allowed in our districts, basically. Because you could say, well, let's limit it to 10,000 gallons. Well, we have a fuel tank ourselves, Public Works does, that's larger than 10,000 gallons, that we use to fuel our own vehicles and things like that. So that's kind of how it came about, and I don't know if Mr. City Attorney wants to weigh in a little more on that, or, but we did look at it several ways to try to define it, so.
Other than these substances are prohibited when they're stored in a manner or amount that adversely affects the surrounding areas. And so that allows a little bit of leeway to look and see whether we have concerns that whatever substance they are storing might be dangerous to the surrounding area. Also, just to clarify, I think what the, we wanted to hit not just ethanol, but whatever the next ethanol is, whatever the substance that we're not thinking of or that isn't in use right now, but in three years will be, you know, someone may be asking to store 10 million gallons of it. So rather than come in after the fact and try and change it, we're trying to be proactive without naming every possible chemical compound that meets these dangerous categories.
Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, like on the sign committee, one of the things that we always try to keep in mind is enforceability or the requirements that we're putting on our code enforcement. And I assume the code enforcement would be the, no?
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission. Okay, then we're talking about the planning commission now. The way this is written, it is rather subjective. And for example, there's one word in here about vibration. What is an acceptable level of vibration? That's very subjective. You could always, we might be setting ourselves up here for a lot of trouble from complainers, too. Now, I don't have a problem with explosive substances, radioactive substances, but when you get into noise and vibration, we're in an industrial park.
But we're a light industry.
Right.
So we don't allow things like metal stamping and things like that that are heavy uses that make a lot of noise and vibration. I will say that, I can tell you that BEI has their tables on nitrogen because the train track causes vibration of their instrumentation. So that's why they have a nitrogen tank out there at BEI, is because their tables float on nitrogen. But, and I think that was, that's one of the words that was already in there, correct?
Well, so the, this language, the everything from creating any dangerous, injurious, or noxious, otherwise objectionable condition related to yada, 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 is already in the district restrictions, but it's just listed as the intent of that section. And so when we say it's our intent to do something, but then we don't later on actually do that, it leaves us in a gray area. But, so this language was taken from the intent section. But I don't know that that changes your concern in that ultimately, in some instances, someone is gonna be able to say, well, no, this isn't a, an amount being stored in a manner that's dangerous or will adversely affect the surrounding area. And then someone else would be obviously making an argument that yes, it is. And then the planning commission would make that determination.
Well, the second whereas, we're talking about in order to further preserve health and safety. Down here, the added language here, we're including things like, and I understand fire, explosion, radioactivity, but when you get into areas like noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, and other forms of air pollution, gosh, that's subjective. And I'm not saying I'm dead set against it, but I think it's something we ought to think about.
And if I may, so the litmus test isn't whether there's dust. The litmus test is whether there's dust being stored in a manner or an amount that adversely affects the health and safety of the surrounding area.
For example, a granary where they have dust that's explosive.
Correct.
Right, so it, we're not just saying, oh, you can't have any vibrations at all or no dust. It just, if it's in a manner that adversely affects the health and safety in the surrounding areas, when we're saying, well, that is prohibited. And I agree that there is some level of having to make an assessment based on what the sides are presenting.
Very subjective, so.
Well, but if you look at what we're striking out, it says petroleum refining or storage in more than tank lots.
Yeah.
Tell me what a tank lot is, because this doesn't exist in the dictionary anywhere.
I wouldn't.
So, and that was in our current code, so talk about subjection and all, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the words glare and heat are interesting.
Well, right, I mean, how do you define where it becomes unacceptable? And that's all.
When it affects the adjoining properties or something like that. And what you would say there is that's gonna cover like the solar farms. They're actually putting one in Stuttgart that's gonna be several acres. I don't remember the amount. I read an article on it actually today, but I don't remember the amount. But it's, you know, they're putting in these solar panels. So yeah, if that was your neighbor and you actually had to sit there and look at a glare in the afternoon sun, then that might be too much, you know, to affect the health and safety of the surrounding areas. And, but it's just like, I mean, if you remember the ethanol process, we actually had the fire department go to a facility, look at it, and things like that. So I mean, that's part of the process. The public is invited to the planning commission meetings, they can speak, and that's kind of, some of the other users in the industrial park, they were the ones that expressed a concern about it, being there. So, you know, for their, they didn't want to have to be evacuated and affect their operations and things like that. So things like that could be it. And it's just like, if dust, if someone's producing a lot of dust, that may affect an industry that's doing something next door where their air handling or pulling that dust into it. So that's what you'd have to look at. Now, if that facility is located three miles from any facility and they block it around, then maybe they still would be allowed to operate. But, you know, they've got to be, meet the, well, they've got to meet certain requirements that maybe the planning commission put on them in order to exist.
I may be chasing an unstoppable cat here, but again, I'm worried about enforcement of this, whether it's planning commission or code enforcement. If you have ordinances or laws, they ought to be clear enough that they're not just...
This is not an enforcement. This is prohibited uses that wouldn't be allowed in Mammell. So they wouldn't be allowed to start with in Mammell. So it's not an enforcement issue. It says prohibited uses, that's what the title of it is.
I guess what I'm saying, and this is probably just the engineer in me, but what is an acceptable level of vibration? One company that you just mentioned is very sensitive to vibration. But Kimberly Clark's probably not. I mean, I don't know that. But I'm just saying, where do you draw the line on this? And I'm not sure that this is bad, but I think it's something we ought to get thought to. I might even come by and talk to you and city attorney about this. There might be different wording we could use.
We've got two more readings, so.
Yeah, yeah. But I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, all right, thank you. Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that's why we have a planning commission. You know, there is gonna be some parts that are subjective, and there's always an argument on both sides. That's why we have lawyers. I think this is a good way to try to make sure that we don't have the situations where we don't have, we hadn't even thought about it in the first place. So I like this moving forward. The only thing that I would be worried about is, you know, some things that are already out there, like liquid oxygen tanks and things like that that are already existing, or fuel tanks that we already had. But I think that they've already thought about that, and so I think this is a good move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I'll consider what Alderman Saunders, Councilman, Councilperson Saunders has said. I hadn't really considered some of his thoughts there, and I'll think about that. But I will probably be inclined to vote for this, but I'll put some thought into this. But when, I used to do a lot of business dealings with industrials over the years, and I used to go down to El Dorado, and they've got a very heavy industrial community down there. Bromine plants, you name it, they've got it there. It's a very dangerous situation down there, but they're used to it, and that's what they do down there. And it's not, it's not compatible with what we got going here in Mammell and what the mindset seems to be. So I'm inclined to think, after talking with Mr. Neri and so on over the last year, I think this is probably the right thing to do. It kind of keeps us industrial light, as I would call it, as opposed to heavy. That's all I've got, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I also, I wanted to add something. The lawyer in me would love to just list every chemical, because it would be crystal clear. One of the benefits and one of the things that the mayor asked is that we draft it in such a way, sometimes industries contact the city and say, do you think this is going to work? And sometimes a yes or no, we do think it'll work here, we don't think it'll work here, can stop some, can stop a train before it gets moving. But if we don't have something listed, then we have to look at it and say, well, there's nothing in the code that clearly says that what you're requesting would be prohibited. And so we were kind of, we were kind of trying to aim at some of the ability to, if an industry calls and says, hey, this is what we're thinking, is this allowed there? Some way of kind of saying, well, it might not be in your best interest to pursue this because of this provision here. But we don't have that mechanism when things are listed the way they are. Which raised additional comments or questions, I can see.
Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor, I'm gonna need your help on this, because I'm having one of those senior moments. In the fire department, we have a book that lists all hazardous materials, and we carry them on engines. I've got one in my glove compartment right now. And it's for the numbered placards.
Right, right.
And I've forgotten the name of that book. I'm having a senior on that.
Yeah, they used to call it like the orange book or the red book or something like that, but, yeah, the orange book. But that's what it is. I mean, it actually tells you what the, what the, like, how far you're supposed to evacuate and things like that, yes.
And it goes.
Chemical Bible, I don't know, but yeah.
It goes through virtually every chemical that can be transported anywhere. And it's for firefighters to use. And I'm not as concerned about how you treat an emergency situation, that's firefighter's job. But you mentioned that you would like to have, you wish that you could list everything. There are sections in that book, and I can bring one and I'll give it to you, but you might be able to use that book to your advantage and say, any chemicals listed in such and such section?
Well, but the problem is, it's the quantity of that chemical.
Okay.
Okay, so, you know, an ounce of a chemical is fine to be in a facility, but a ton of that, same chemical could be very explosive or something like that. So that's where we got into the dilemma of trying to define the amount. Because you can't just say every chemical, because, you know, like, we've got, you know, and I don't know what's out there. I mean, there's, you know, maybe what Kimberly Clark puts in their diapers could be too mu, or not diapers, in their wet wipes. Wow, I messed up there, that's a bad one. And their wet wipes, the diapers are made up the road, but then their wet wipes. But maybe that in a huge quantity could be bad, you know? And so that's where we're kind of a dilemma.
And that was a hypothetical.
That's a hypothetical, yes. Kimberly Clark doesn't put, it's controlled by the FDA, so, yeah.
But Alderman Saunders, the first folks we went to, to talk with about coming up with this list was the fire department. And we went back and forth a bit and then kind of came to this conclusion that there wasn't a particular one substance that on its own we were trying to ban that isn't already covered in here, but rather just when it's an accessory use to the primary function and they're storing it, was the...
Okay, well, that just flew through my mind when you said something about listing it.
Right, right. And the, it's just like, we have propane tanks out there for individual forklifts. But what is too much? I mean, you know, it's kind of like the whole thing about vibration. When is it too much, you know? And so there's, and I don't want to pick on somebody, but, you know, I'll just do this. At one point in time, we had Target Distribution Center. Okay, what, you know, they may have had shotgun shells, they may have had lithium batteries. They may have had all kinds of batteries. So I mean, but, but yeah, when you get it to a certain point, and, well, I don't want to go there. But anyway, it's one of those things that, yeah, you can store it to a certain capacity, but then when does it become a danger? And it's dangerous if there's a fire, if you've got a lot of plastics in there, you know, just the breathing of it or synthetics and all that. So that's the concerns, and it's not an easy thing to define, I promise you. That's why we're here, and that's why we took this to the planning commission and kind of had to go through some of the same discussions with them that we're having here today. Because you always want to, you always want to, you always want to say, yeah, it's black and white, and this is it, you know?
Sometimes you can't. We faced that on the sign committee. And I'm not saying I'm against this, I like the intent of it, I'm just...
Well, and if you've got a suggestion that you want to bring back to us, we're welcome to it. I mean, that's, yeah, you know.
At this point, I'm not.
Okay. But I mean later, I mean, in the next week or so.
But I'm not against it necessarily, but...
And I'd encourage folks to look at some of the other things that are prohibited in that section, when you get a chance.
Alderman Hope?
I'm just wondering if it could be concluded that any substance which may cause an environmental hazard in the community, and then define what various optional hazards could be, whether it's something in the air, or in the water, or in the, on the soil, or whatever, but just circuit around a substance that can cause an environmental hazard, again, whether it's fire or whatever, but, and then define what those hazards are, rather than name every single chemical in the entire world.
Well, but see, the problem with that is gasoline or diesel fuel is an environmental hazard if it's dumped on the ground.
Right, but they are still inside an EPA-regulated safety, right? I mean, they're in the ground.
Well, that's true, but how, do you want to allow it, I mean, do you want to allow a million gallons of it? I mean, that's, you know, and the amount, that's the problem we're trying to define. So if you list it, you know, they're gonna cause an environmental hazard if they're spilled on the ground. But then what's the storage? What's the maximum storage you're gonna allow of gasoline and diesel fuel? In the industrial park, so...
If it's in the ground sealed, that would be conditionally safety, safe?
No. I guess I don't understand your question.
Well, I mean, in other words, what we were facing before were the tanks that were above ground.
Well.
And if they, you know, burst, well, then we're in trouble.
Well, but our tanks are above ground, at our Public Works facility.
Oh, that's not good.
Well, no, that is, that's fine. That's the, the better thing now is above-ground tanks, because they're double-walled and you have a containment area around them. When you put tanks in the ground, they leachate and leak into the soil around it. Then you have to remediate the entire soil and everything. And so your recommendation now is you're better off going to above-ground tanks. But all tanks are double-walled now, but you're still better off if you can go with above-ground tanks that are contained, because you can see the spills and the leaks better.
There's always gonna be some danger if you allow anything, it's just a matter of what's the maximum degree of danger. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Williams?
So what we're doing is, we're just, any new company that would come in would just have to show, improve to the planning commission or to us that they are environmentally safe and that they adhere to these... I know you can't list every single danger that's, I mean, you just can't do it.
Because we don't even know what they are.
You know, we don't even, exactly, but they would have to come in and prove... You know, we don't even, exactly, but they would have to come in and prove their safety.
I don't quite know that they would have to prove their safety, but if we were going to deny it, we'd have to show that it was unsafe.
Right, right.
Which is a different burden, if you would.
Gotcha.
And it could be an existing industry that wanted to start-
Something new.
Something new also. So it wouldn't just apply to new industries, but if someone did a renovation or addition to their facility and they were adding another product, then it'd also have to be considered.
Right.
But it's, and that's, you know, that's the dilemma of the whole thing. It's, yeah, how do you determine some of this? But that's why, in a public meetings, I think it'd be better than, it's, it's not putting the burden on one city employee that says, yeah, this, this amount is dangerous. I mean, it's a, it's a collective body and the public gets a chance to speak, so.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no other discussion on ordinance 935, we'll move on to the next ordinance, which is first reading of ordinance number 936, smoking ban on walking path trails owned by the city. Madam City Clerk, if you'd give the first reading?
Be it enacted in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 936, and ordinance prohibiting tobacco use on city walking trails.
Okay, this was actually brought to me by two of the young ladies that are in the audience tonight, Ms. Linder Conley and Ms. Gracie Easton. They were Future Builders Incorporated, and they came to me and asked that Maumell take an active role in prohibiting tobacco use on city walking trails. And so, I don't know, Ms. Easton or Ms. Conley, do y'all want to speak? Would y'all like to speak on behalf of y'all's organization, or, okay, yeah. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Linder Conley, and my address is 16117 Highway 365 in Wrightsville, Arkansas, 72183.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Watson, and the council members for allowing us to speak this evening, and we appreciate the addition of the ordinance on your agenda. We are with Future Builders, Ms. Easton and I, and part of our objective is to advocate for a tobacco-free Arkansas. And we know that smoking is hazardous to our health, but what some people don't know is the effect that secondhand smoke also has on the health. So we were asking that the City of Maumell adopt a policy or an ordinance to protect our trails from smoke and smoke tobacco products. Now, we know when children and adults use tobacco in a family-free area, that our kids sometimes will mimic what they see. And if they see cigarette butts, or they see people smoking or chewing tobacco, they will mimic this behavior. So we do not want to expose our children to unhealthy habits. Also, we know that cigarette butts do not decompose. So if a child should ingest one of these butts, it could cause medical problems or even death. So we want our walking trails to be beautiful, and we want to protect the health of those that are walking in those trails or on those trails.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Conley.
Okay, thank you.
There may be questions, but if there are, we'll call you back up.
Good deal.
All right, thank you. Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of you might remember that I did bring ordinance prohibiting smoking near playground equipment. And so I do support the ban of, of smoking in public areas where children might be or people might be that don't want to be exposed to the smoke. But, and I would support this ordinance on the walking trails, too, because that's in an area that would be congested, and you can't anticipate walking up on children and things like that. The problem that I do have with this ordinance, and I would like to maybe even entertain, if I could, an amendment to it, it says in Section 1, tobacco use is prohibited. I would not really be interested in regulating someone who's using tobacco as dip or chewing, or that is something that I feel like they have the, their personal right to do. It doesn't infringe on other people's rights, like cigarette smoke would do, that you can't control. So I could support this ordinance as long as we were stating that the, that we would not allow smoking, or even e-cigarettes, like I did in the past ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
What is, somebody's gonna have to educate me here. What is vaping? Is that an e-cigarette?
Yes.
Is that what that is?
Yes.
Okay, so that's clearly defined, or, I mean, that's clear then that that would include-
Well, it's, vaping is, is, yeah, is a vapor that you inhale, basically.
It's an e-cigarette?
Yes.
Okay. I had that question. Then there's, there's a little typo here. Probably next reading, we can take it out. It's not going to cause any problem here. It's the last whereas, right after whereas, it says tobacco. We probably take, I think that was an error for that to be in there.
Yeah, that's been removed.
Has it? Okay. Okay, that's about all I've got. I'll probably support this.
Thank you, Alderman Mosley. Alderman Vapersan?
Several things come to mind. I've seen Councilman Mosley, Councilman Williams, because I walk the paths quite frequently, and I was just trying to think if I've ever seen anybody smoking on the paths. I guess most joggers tend not to, or people riding a bike. I don't, I don't know that I've ever seen anybody. I was just gonna ask that question. I don't know.
Yeah.
Have you?
I can answer.
My second question is this, is this enforceable?
Uh, well, it is enforceable.
Well, what's the, what's the, what's the penalty? Timeout, what do they get?
They're, they're subject to immediate ejection from the walking trails.
So what if they step off the trail and walk alongside it? Just a legitimate question.
They're, they're not in violation.
They're not in violation.
Wow. I didn't think about that.
And if we're gonna, and I am, you know me, and I am definitely in favor of putting good role models in front of kids, talking healthy lifestyles, we're gonna have to shut down McDonald's and Wendy's and Chick-fil-A because the number one killer in America's heart disease and obesity is running rampant. And we haven't taught our children how to eat right, let alone how to smoke right. If you want to go off the deep end, I'll go. But anyway, it had no point at all. I just wanted to muddy the water.
[laughing]
Thank you. I'm done.
Good job.
Thank you.
Alderman Williams?
Well, they do smoke in the park, and I can, if you, if you go walking early on a Monday morning after they've just trashed it on the weekend, you'll see that, yes, they do. But I would support this, too. I agree with Alderman Anderson in that I don't know that the other types of tobacco use do infringe, but I hate to come up on cigarette smoke. I hate it. And, but I will support this. I think this is a very good idea. But like you said, if you, if you step off the walk, that doesn't make any, I don't know where you draw the line at that. That's pretty, I mean, thanks. Thanks, John.
Well, I mean, you could, you'd have to ban it off all city property then, if you're gonna take it to that nth degree as far as you can't do it anywhere. So you'd have to say any city property.
That's true.
I mean, the next step would be-
Do we want to do that?
The next step would, the next step in my opinion would be sidewalks or-
That's, that's-
Well, it-
Private property. And, well, it isn't, it's-
It's, it's in the public right of way typically. The sidewalks are going to be there, but it's, then it's a matter of how do you regulate in the, in the public right of way because-
Are we digging ourselves into, I don't know.
It's a slippery slope.
Devil's advocate, sorry.
Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. That was a good point you made about the walking paths.
Oh, boy, that worries me.
Very good.
When you said that, that worries me.
But you did muddy the water. I think you all know how I feel about inhaling smoke. And so I'm, I'm not big on people not, people being allowed to smoke on the walking paths, but you just brought up a good point. Now, if we want to carry it further and say all public properties, I would be dead set against it, and I'd probably be out here caying painting with a sign. Because I don't think that's government's role, and I don't believe, no offense to y'all, but I'm not out to stop people from smoking if they want to smoke, okay? I choose not to be around it. But I don't feel like I've got a moral or ethical right to try to stop you from smoking if you want to suck it in your lungs. I do have to agree with all, and if we carry it out to all city property, the next logical step to me is anywhere in the city limits. Well, I don't like drinking either, so I don't want you drinking in the city limits. So where do you stop that kind of stuff? I don't have a problem with on the walking path, but I do, but I do have a problem like Alderman Anderson. I do have a problem with people doing chewing tobacco or something like that. That's not infringing on anybody else. So I probably would not support it if that stays in there.
I mean, if we're against spitting, we got to turn off the baseball game.
Well, there you go. There you go. I mean, now, smoking, I understand.
Especially around children.
Around children, I understand that, too, because they are influenced by that sort of activity. So, but I would like to see the chewing tobacco and that sort of thing taken out of this. I really would.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You want to offer an amendment on that?
That's, I was going to.
You make an amendment?
Yeah, I make a motion that we amend Section 1 where it says tobacco use and say smoking and e-cigarettes, or does that sound right? That doesn't, you make the grammatical part work.
The way we had it in ordinance 907 and the future 937 is, changing the tense would be smoking or using e-cigarettes, smoking tobacco or using e-cigarettes out.
Yeah, prohibited. So that's my motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
Yep.
But that also means the definition under Section 2 has got to be-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Redone also, so yeah.
Sorry.
Correct?
Well, it would, it would be cleaner to do that, although it wouldn't be incorrect. We often have definitions for words that are not used, and since we're not talking about tobacco, you're talking about smoking.
I was more interested in where it said it was prohibited.
But we could change the definition. So if you look at Section 2A, for the purpose of this ordinance, tobacco is to include any product, containing, made or derived from tobacco that is intended for, and you could say, intended to be smoked or inhaled, snorted, sniffed, smoked or inhaled.
You can eat it all day.
That's in Section 2A?
Yeah, there's-
Okay.
Our guest wants to speak.
Okay, Ms. Conley?
And then, and then admit the, and spit tobacco, also known as smokeless dip, chew, snooze, and snuff.
Thank you for your consideration. And as I was listening to your amendment, taking out the smokeless tobacco, the dip, chew, snuff, and so forth, and I can understand where you may see that this is not infringing upon another's rights, but it does infringe upon, again, the habits of our children. Smokeless tobacco causes throat cancer, gum decay, mouth cancer, and so forth. So for our children's sake, if we could try and propose something that's going to keep them from seeing someone, it's like if they're in the park and they have a cigarette, and it's not lit, those kids still see the cigarette, and they feel that's okay because it's an adult, again, in a family-friendly environment. So they see someone with a Big Water tobacco or a Big Dipper snuff, they think that's okay. And it may not be infringing upon those that are running, but it does expose children to very bad habits. So we're not telling people not to smoke, we're not telling people not to chew. We're just asking people, please don't do it on the walking trails where we can expose people to unhealthy habits, and also secondhand smoke. So that's kind of my spiel on, on snuff and, and also on tobacco use, because it's still an unhealthy behavior that we're allowing our children to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conley.
We're not going to go down that road.
Yeah.
We have a motion on it.
Yeah, but I was thinking he-
And then later in the paragraph, it says, and spit tobacco, also known as smokeless dip, chew, snooze, and snuff in any form.
So we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to, the prohibited use, we're gonna have to amend that, but we're also going to amend Section 2A, I believe, in order to-
Do you want to bring it back next meeting for the first reading?
Yeah, it'll, it'll have to come back for a first reading. There's, there's no doubt, it's got to come back for a first reading, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a substantial change, so, if the motion passes, that's correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, can I say something on this real quick?
Uh, yes, sir, if you'd state your name and address, come-
Adam Davies, 41 Blue Mountain Drive. I'm sure we're all aware of this, it's parents' job to raise kids and set standards, not the government's.
Thank you. Thank you. Parents' jobs.
Takes a village.
Thank you.
I wish most of them would do it, but-
Yeah.
I understand, you can't legislate families.
Understand that. All right, we have a motion on the floor to amend ordinance number 936 to basically eliminate just tobacco use, but change it to smoking tobacco, and then the e-cigarettes and that sort of thing. So, does everybody understand the motion?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor of amending the motion, amending the ordinance as motioned, please signify by saying yes.
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 Any opposed, say no?
No.
Okay, motion passes. So it will be on first reading at the next meeting after it's been amended. I still have lights on. Alderman Timmons?
We've kind of gone through, but, you know, talking to Vapersan, one step at a time, you know, we can't do anything about the McDonald's thing and whatsoever, but, you know, we can't not do something because we have other things that are wrong, so.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Anderson, I had your light on. Was that for the motion? Okay. Alderman Mosley, your-
Yeah, I've got a question. I cannot remember here, I'm drawing a blank. As far as medical marijuana, is, is that going to be, is that, can, can that be consumed publicly?
I don't, it can be. Well, I don't think it can be smoked publicly. You can't smoke it where you currently can't do tobacco use, or, yeah, so-
We don't have to legislate for that.
Well, we can't legislate for that. Yeah, Chief, if you want to address that.
It's my understanding that as long as you're using a method of ingestion marijuana, that it doesn't involve smoking, it can be used publicly, the creams, oral ingestion, that kind of thing, they're going to allow that to do publicly. But the actual smoking, I don't think that's going to be regulated, just like smoking.
Okay, so, so medical marijuana cannot be smoked publicly?
That's my understanding.
Where there's a ban.
Right, well, or where you can't smoke.
Where there's a ban on tobacco, you can't-
There's a ban on tobacco.
Right.
Same ban carries from-
Now, if you could, say you could smoke in a boat in the middle of Lake Willistee, I would assume you could still take your marijuana as medicine in a boat in Lake Willistee, yes, sir.
Okay.
But you couldn't go to Waffle House in Arkansas. Now, if you're in Mississippi, I guess you can. But you couldn't go to Waffle House in Arkansas. Now, if you're in Mississippi, I guess you can.
But, but as written, this would, uh, it would come under the definition of tobacco.
I don't think so. There's no tobacco in Maryland.
So, so somebody could walk down our walking trail with a medical marijuana cigarette?
Well, because I think the issue is that there are certain prohibitions in the constitutional amendment and subsequent legislation, um, that may prohibit it, but there's nothing in this ordinance whatsoever that would prohibit it.
Should we include that?
Green leafy stuff.
It's prohibited in state law.
I'm saying it may be prohibited, so, but this ordinance doesn't address marijuana. And so whether it should be included would be a question for the policy maker.
That would bother me more, I think, than, than cigarettes.
It is something to look into.
Well, there, yeah, we think they're still going to be addressing some issues in the, the laws before they're totally released, so, I mean, you, you can't even make an application till sometime Yeah, June thirtieth or something like that. And then until they actually get a dispensary, they're not going to issue any of the letters, cards, whatever you want to call them. Uh, so until there's a dispensary, and that's going to take a while to get through, so I think there's going to be some more legislation coming from the Health Department. And then there was actually a state law that tried to prohibit any type of smoking of it, and it didn't pass. So there's still possibly time where some of that'll take place, but there's still, you know, you can, can be in a food product and you can ingest it on a trail, so.
If, if we were to try to include that on the walking paths, would this be the, uh, I'm kind of asking the city attorney what his opinion would be, would it be, uh, would be this, would this be the time to maybe try to include this, or should we wait and see how some of the laws evolve?
It would be my preference to wait. There's, we're also very limited in the amount of additional restrictions that local government can place on, um, these things. And so it'd probably be, I know there's zoning regulations and a whole bunch of different prohibitions. I'm not sure what authority we would have, uh, to enact additional restrictions or if the constitutional amendment and subsequent legislation would preempt us from doing that. So may, hopefully I can have a better answer for you at the next council meeting.
Okay, I'll, I'll back away from that one then. Thank you.
And, and before the planning commission this month, there's some zoning regulation changes that are being addressed for dispensaries and cultivation facilities, so that will be coming to this council, uh, after it goes through the planning commission process.
Okay.
Alderman Vaporsan?
Section three, letter A, appropriate signs should be posted in the above specified areas. How many miles of walking trails do we have in Mammell?
Uh, like twenty-nine.
How much is this going to cost the city to post signs?
Actually, the, the stamp out smoking would provide signs for that.
Really?
Yes, as I understand it, and, yeah, they're both nodding their head yes, so.
Okay.
Yeah, great.
Oh, wow.
Super. Thank you.
Now, what you got to understand is not all the trails are City of Mammell owned, too. So this doesn't apply to every single path in Mammell, because not all of them are city-owned.
So if the smokers find the paths, that's where they're going to hang.
Let them hang there.
Those dirty smokers.
All right, uh, there's no more discussion, ordinance number nine thirty-six. It'll be on first reading again after it's been amended.
Children away.
All right. The next item is resolution number two thousand seventeen dash ten approving a preliminary development plan river, villas at River Point Drive. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution two zero one seven dash ten approving a preliminary development plan for lot three of the Villa of River Point Drive addition.
Uh, this is the preliminary development plan that's for the, uh, and I can't remember the term that somebody used. It's, it's like an entertainment area, but it's the croquet course and the, the, um, uh, spa area and things like that. And, uh, so Mr. Blake Jackson is here with the development, and Mr. Eric Holloway, also the engineer on that project, is here if there's any questions on it.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty seventeen dash ten.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty seventeen dash ten. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I was just going to say I, I visited briefly with, uh, Mr. Holloway right before the meeting and, and, uh, as I understand it, lot three will be developed, as, as I understood it, with a, a little swimming, uh, lap pool and a grass area and a little entertainment bar, and then a lake there where the retention pond is, and, and I don't have any trouble with that.
Thank you. And you have a copy of this, the preliminary development plan in your packet. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor of Resolution twenty seventeen dash ten, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is resolution number two thousand seventeen dash eleven, and it's federal legislation on internet vendor sales tax. And so to just, uh, make this clear, Resolution twenty seventeen dash oh nine was on the council's agenda last meeting, and it was tabled indefinitely because of some of the language that was in it. And so this is a new resolution, but it's so similar to the other one, I would ask that the council make a motion to bring this resolution off the table for discussion.
What do you mean by off the table for discussion? You're talking about
Well, it was tabled, and so the only way we can bring it back up is the council brings it back up. Is, I mean, it's a different number, but it's basically the same resolution.
With the changes that were made. To remove, uh, requests to state legislators, and it's just asking for federal legislation.
And it also took out the language about the Senate Bill one forty and all that.
So you're saying we need to kill the other one?
No, I'm just asking you to bring this resolution off the table. Basically, this, the
Oh, I'm with you, okay.
Y'all didn't table it until the next meeting. Y'all tabled it indefinitely.
Right.
And so therefore, it can't be brought up, and, and just to make sure that it's, I mean, it's not the same ordinance. Technically, it has a different number, but it's still an ordinance that we discuss, I mean, a resolution that we discussed last meeting, and changes were suggested, and so we're making those changes. So I would prefer that a motion be made to bring this resolution back up for discussion, for reading again, and then for, uh, hopefully a vote if the motion so passes.
So it's, do we need to bring it up by name? Twenty is, twenty seventeen dash
It was oh nine.
Nine.
It was oh nine, okay.
I make a motion that we bring back, uh, Resolution twenty seventeen dash oh nine for discussion.
Okay, and, and let me make it very clear, but it's now being called Resolution twenty seventeen dash eleven, so.
Which is now being called twenty seventeen eleven.
Okay, all right, thank you. I just wanted very clear. Did I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, uh, bring back up Resolution two thousand seventeen dash oh nine as Resolution number two thousand seventeen dash eleven. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Think I have two noes and
This is a no, too.
Well, yeah, but two noes voting, and yeah, so
Four nos here.
Three and five. Did, did I have all yeses over here? Okay, all right, so it's five to three technically. All right, um.
Is that enough to bring it back?
It is, yes. It's a simple majority. I was wrong when I said last time it was a super majority. It's a simple majority. I should have said that prior to. All right, um. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read Resolution number two thousand seventeen dash eleven.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution twenty seventeen dash eleven, a resolution expressing the Mammell City Council's endorsement of federal legislation requiring that large-volume internet vendors either collect or remit any relevant state and local compensating use tax on internet sales, or that internet vendors provide the state and all relevant locality sufficient information regarding the internet purchaser to allow the state or local government to collect such local compensating use taxes and for other purposes.
Okay, the majority of the changes were, you know, they were, they were made on several areas, but the number one, section one is where it's changed, where it basically says, endorse federal regulation requiring the large-volume internet vendors either collect or remit any relevant state, state and local compensating use tax on internet sales, or that internet vendors provide the state and all relevant locality sufficient information regarding an internet purchaser to allow state or local government to collect such local compensating use taxes. So that's what's been changed. It's not saying that the state legislature do anything as far as collecting a tax on it. And, uh, and then, uh, it eliminated any reference to Senate Bill one forty that caused some people some concerns. Alderman Hope?
I'll just say that I informed Representative Mark Lowery of the changes that were made, and he is, has no opposition to, um, our changes and, and has agreed to support it.
Thank you very much. Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm going to reiterate some things that we've already heard here, because I don't want them to be forgotten. Arkansas is one of the poorest states in the United States, but we have the ninth highest tax rate in the United States. Now, this is partially because we have a piecemeal of regulations in our tax code. Representative Mark Lowery has been appointed to a committee to rewrite our tax code here in Arkansas and do away with this piecemeal, it's all, it's just a cobblestone of pieces, and try to write a cleaner tax rate for Arkansas. Now, um, this particular, if this bill were to go through the Arkansas State Legislature, the one that we're supporting with this resolution, what we're doing is we're adding another piecemeal item to the existing tax code.
Now, this is not going to the state legislature?
Well, no, but we're, but our resolution says that we're endorsing whatever does go.
Not to the state. This says only federal. This is only federal.
Well, I still can't support it.
Okay, all right. It says endorses federal legislation, so it has nothing to do with the state.
Okay, even if it's federal. I don't even have to think about that long. I disagree with the concept of this. Um, it's just another piecemeal of, it's a tax grab, in my opinion, in my opinion. I think what we need to do is allow, and this has nothing to do with the state of Arkansas, because the, the municipal league has for years been trying to get Arkansas to pass this kind of legislation. So you're saying this resolution has nothing to do with the state of Arkansas?
That, that is not true. The, the municipal league has been trying to get federal legislation. Senator, or Representative Wallack from Northwest Arkansas wrote in two thousand thirteen the Marketplace Fairness Act. The Arkansas Municipal League supported it at that time. It passed the Senate, but it never passed the House of Representatives. In two thousand fifteen, he brought another one back, and it's called the Tax Parity Act, I believe is what it's called. It didn't pass either one because it never went to a vote on either one of them. But it's, it, and that's what Representative Lowery talked about, is it needs to be done at the federal level and not the state level, because you don't want the, the state of Arkansas telling the state of Tennessee they've got to remit taxes to Arkansas. But the federal law can do it, and, and what you're doing basically, and it's just like I said the other day, when you start purchasing mattresses online and you're not paying the sales tax there, you're taking tax dollars away, and it's not an illegal tax grab. It's, people are supposed to be remitting all these taxes off the internet purchases they're making now. It's called a use tax. They're supposed to do that. I think the state collected twenty-six dollars last year, or two years ago now, because of that. There's, there's got to be a line item, so you're talking about piecemeal taxes. There's probably going to be a spot put on your income tax to say, you know, what were your internet purchases last year, and you need to remit that amount then at a six and a half percent or wherever you live, you know, nine and a half percent or something like that. So, but you're, you know, it's unfair competition for brick and mortar stores that support our community by being part of the chamber, support the local sports teams, support the high school, but yet you got a big company that's based out of Seattle, and I can't talk about Amazon because they're actually remitting sales tax now to the state, but, you know, a big company can sit out there and sell everything to Arkansas and never have to pay any taxes. But it's like I said the other day, services are rendered on that. We have to then go investigate when packages are stolen off the front porch that were delivered by a UPS or FedEx truck. So, I mean, there are services to provide it to internet, uh, suppliers.
Okay, and this is a discussion, not an argument.
Understand.
But
And this is not my resolution, so.
I'd say that to my wife, she didn't believe it. Didn't see her for three days, and then I opened, started, started, opened up a little bit.
Who, me?
No, carry on.
Okay. One of the arguments for this in the past that I have heard several times is that it is hurting brick and mortar or small businesses. And in addition, you have services like stolen packages that the police department has to deal with. And I understand those things. Those are two different issues. Now, first, small businesses, for the first time in the history of this country for three consecutive years because of the economy, we've had more small businesses go out of business than we have had startup in this country. It's due to the economy. It's not due to the internet and sales tax.
What do you think's driving the economy?
I can't, I can't really go there, but our economy has been put in a bad position. And it's part of its overregulation of the federal government. They're just so if you've ever been in small business and self-employed, you know what I'm talking about. And I have been. Now, small business tax is I would hold another reason that small business tax is not killing our small businesses because the expense of ordering off the internet is offset. You've got shipping costs, you've got, well, I've had to pay them.
Twenty-five dollars now is the, if you go over twenty-five dollars, shipping is free almost on every large internet provider.
Well, but twenty-five dollars. Uh, you also have all, you normally have handling costs, you have processing costs. I see it on TV all the time for items a lot more than twenty bucks.
Well, I said large internet vendors. I'm not talking about every commercial that's on TV, and this, this addresses large internet vendors, large-volume internet vendors. And I believe the, in the federal legislation, it's over a million dollars in sales.
Okay, well, you know, if they do it at the federal level, not much we can do about it, but I really don't see that as a problem for our small businesses. They give services the internet can't. Now, so far as our police having to watch for packages or deal with packages being stolen, those packages are being delivered by local people, okay, FedEx, whoever. So we're having people employed that are paying income tax, uh, that are gainfully employed by sales off the internet. So there is another side to this coin, so. Unfortunately, I cannot, or fortunately, I cannot support this bill. I just can't do it.
It's a resolution, but
A resolution, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Williams?
I just have a question. So if we take the, uh, that's, if the state, if it stayed in there and the state were to regulate this, it would, it would violate interstate commerce laws, right? So if the feds get involved, or is that, are they not violating those interstate commerce laws?
Not if, not if it's federal legislation.
That's what I, okay. That was just my question.
Yeah, and there's, there's actually, there may be a Supreme Court case based on the South Dakota passed a legislation that is supposed to collect it. So there's going to be a Supreme Court decision made whether it is a true violation of interstate commerce or not.
Okay.
Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I, I don't support the Marketplace Fairness Act or whatever is replacement or whatever is going to be. Uh, don't, I don't support tax on inter Don't, I don't support tax on interstate or internet sales, so I'll be voting no. And this, this may be an election issue at some point here. I think most residents probably do not support tax on internet sales, so be interesting to see how it works out.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on Resolution Number 2017-11? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no?
No.
So I have four to four. How am I going to vote, Caleb?
You're going to vote yes.
You're going to vote, Mayor.
We've already had a discussion today about this. I choose to vote yes on this matter. And I've been advocating it at the federal level for the last four years, so I'm going to continue to do that. Because I do feel like small businesses lose out. And I saw a graph today with 700 Radio Shacks closing, Macy's stores closing, 30 Gander Mountain Stores closing, and I can, I can't prove it, but I can attribute a lot of it to internet sales. Radio Shack wanted to be, used to be one of my favorite stores, I went into as a kid. And now you can get all that stuff off the internet, and you can go into Radio Shack, touch it, play with it, do whatever, and then order it for $5 cheaper online. And you say, well, then they need to get on the stick. But they're also supplying and providing employment for people in the area that that internet vendor is not doing. So when you talk about job creation, I think your small businesses create more jobs for your local communities than other big internet vendors, because most of them locate in rural areas where they don't have to pay high property taxes and things like that. So, my opinion. Next item is Resolution Number 2017-12, authorizing mayor to submit a grant application to the state. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas. Resolution 2017-12, authorizing the mayor to submit a grant application to the state of Arkansas on behalf of the City of Mammell for a wastewater project to benefit low to moderate income residents of the Morgan community, and expend such grant funds in the construction of said wastewater project in Mammell and Plaski County.
Okay, we've been talking about this for several months now, and we had a public meeting on March the 30th about this grant application. And then on May the 5th, we received a letter that we had been approved as a, our pre-application had been approved, and then now we can submit an actual application. And so, I mean, that's, you know, that's exactly what happened, is we got a letter stating that. So, but it says the actual funding amounts cannot be determined at this time, the use of ANRC or RD loan funds would be up to you. So, any additional funds to meet this, to meet the $4.3 million that it specified would have to be loans or whatever. But what our goal would be is whatever grant funding we get, we would do that phase of that project. We wouldn't, it's five phases, I believe is what it is, but you wouldn't do the, if we didn't get the entire funding, we wouldn't do the entire project. So, but right now, we're asking for the council's authority to submit a grant application to the state.
We don't know. We don't know yet, so that's the problem.
Alderman Mosley?
Okay, so, because it seemed like we've already done this, but it was for the pre-app?
Well, no, what did we pass the last time?
It was a related resolution, as is the next resolution. I don't recall exactly what it was, but they're all related.
It's the what?
Yeah, it was the interlocal.
Oh, the interlocal with the county, that's what it was.
Oh, that's right. I remember that.
Yeah, because we're going, we're doing it alongside Plaski County, so you, we passed a resolution to allow us to enter into an interlocal agreement with the county, which we done.
Okay.
Okay, and so now, this is, and we turned in our pre-app, and there wasn't any point in turning in an application if we were turned down in the pre-application. So we didn't request that until now.
Okay, okay.
And then, as City Attorney Norris pointed out, the next item appoints Central Arkansas Planning and Development as the nonprofit agency that does the administration of the grants, so...
Okay, okay, I'll ask my question about that one when we get to that one. But, all right, I'm good on this.
All right.
Motion to approve Resolution 2017-12.
Second.
We have motion and second to approve Resolution Number 2017-12. And what I do want to tell you is because some questions came out about notifications and things like that, we're going to do another meeting, and we're going to do a meeting on May the 30th. It's going to be letters sent to all the residents and the landowners. The last time, the letters were only sent to the residents, and a lot of those homes are renters, and the landowners didn't get notification of it. So they would like notification, they wanted notification, so we're going to have another meeting on May the 30th at 6:00 PM at the Jess Odom Community Center on this project.
Alderman Holt?
I do want to make sure that we understand that the project that we're talking about, here is the drawing of it, is primarily in the county, and that I have also the copy of the 2017-07, that was the original document where we gave the permission to the mayor to apply for that. And that, as you just got to alluding to, that whenever this comes along, there is going to be an amount of money that is going to come out of the funds from the City of Mammell to help pay for this, and it is for county. So, as it has said, that the, we have an agreement between the City of Mammell and the county. However, the county is a non-financial member, it is entirely on the shoulders of the city. I am very concerned that we have other things inside the city that we would need to discuss. And at that next meeting, I'll be prepared to discuss in detail, some details that I won't go into at this point, since there will be a future meeting. But I am gravely concerned about what we're talking about here.
But the sewer, the wastewater will provide wastewater to the Brown property, is, that's what we refer to it as. It's 90 acres along Long Fisher Road, behind the McDonald's and all that, that's all commercial properties. And we haven't been able to get wastewater to that. And so part of this project, that's where the pump station would be located, and would provide sewer to that. So it's not just the county, there's portions of Mammell that would be served by it.
Also, Councilmember Holt, we don't know yet whether there will be a city match or requirement for the city to spend any funds. I think originally, we were thinking there would be a match, we're now thinking that there may not be. And so if there is any additional funds that the city would need to spend and put in, that would of course come before the city council at that time to get y'all's permission to spend any additional money other than what a grant might provide.
If the, this is residents of the county, and maybe part of it to Little Rock, whatever, if the county is involved, why are they not involved in the financial support or construction or the development of it as well as us? Why are we doing? I was at the meeting, the very first question that I wrote down, and I still have my notes, the very first question at the opening of that meeting, the gentleman said, "Why are you doing this for us?" It was a, it was a very decent meeting, but I cannot in clear conscience say that that was an exciting meeting, and the people that, I left early because I had another commitment, but I stayed for 95% of it. And I cannot say that there is great enthusiasm about this. So I'm just telling you the way I feel about it, and I'm, if it passes, so be it. I live here, and this is my home, but...
Have you read our strategic plan?
I'll reserve all other comment until the next meeting.
Okay, the, the reason the county cannot do it is because they've already submitted two other projects for the same type, and they're, they can't do anymore. So, and it is, it benefits the City of Mammell. There is a benefit to Mammell. We get to serve a large commercial track that would hopefully bring some retail development to Mammell, so that we're not sending our tax dollars into North Rock, or sending them into Little Rock, or into Conway. So that's the benefit to Mammell. And that was explained at the meeting.
This is a revenue generator.
And, and you're not committing to any funds, as Mr. Norris said?
We might have a Bass Pro Shop sitting on that very location if it was shovel-ready.
Alderman Mosley?
I was going to say, I'm kind of, I'm on board with this until we find out whether it's a match or not. If there's, if there's no match, then boy, it's a great deal. And if there is a match, then we got to look at it.
That's exactly right.
Yes.
So, that's kind of the way I'm looking at it.
This is, this fits so in line with our strategic plan.
Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Mosley took the words right out of my mouth. That's what I was going to say, we need, we need to move forward so we can see if this is something that we're going to have to match. Let's, you know, don't get the cart before the horse. This is right in line with our strategic plan, like Councilmember Vaperson said. And this will help us in future negotiations in trying to annex that area. So I am totally in support of trying to develop that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a curious question, I'm not against this, but I am curious, you said a percentage of the area that is affected by this, if we get a grant, and we do it, a percentage of it is Mammell, about what percentage are we talking? It's not 50/50? I mean, is it 80/20?
5%?
Maybe 5%.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that was a curious question.
One of the, one of the big selling points for us is that, you don't want to just talk about land mats, you want to talk about getting a pump station on the other side of the railroad tracks, which allows more stuff. But the particular type of grant that we're applying for is to benefit low to moderate income folks. And so we're, we're providing wastewater primarily to them through this. But I think the idea is that once the pump station is there, a whole bunch of new avenues open up for us to look at property that is all and exclusively in Mammell.
Okay. Yeah. State your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Eric Holloway, Holloway Engineering. We are the consultants for the grant application. Only thing I would say is there's about a 1,200 acre watershed, basically, that we'd be opening up to sewer, that's up in the Morgan area. Some of it collects sales tax today, that does not come to the City of Mammell. So I, I think you're going to open up an arterial road that, you know, it's not in high capacity now, but it's certainly planned to be that at some point. And I think Mammell has two ways to grow, and we're at that point where it's, we need to grow. And I think you all went through that strategic, you know, the process, and I think an economist came and explained why you need to grow. So I believe that this is a good thing for the city, and I agree with the revenue generation.
Thank you, Eric. Alderman Vaperson?
I was thinking, if you've noticed the McDonald's, how they've revamped up there, it's, it looks nice. It looks very nice. Mayor, the Brown property is basically dead without a pump station. Would that be correct in saying that, that unless...
Without wastewater, yes. So, yes, yes.
If we wrote a check to have that installed, what would we pay?
About 1.5 million.
Okay, so this gives us an opportunity to not to have to do that.
Or raise that.
We have a motion, right?
I don't have a motion, I don't think.
Yeah, yes.
I do? Okay.
Yes.
I didn't write it down, if I did?
Make a motion, I'll make it again. Pass Resolution 2017-12, make a motion.
Okay, all right, all right, I had, I had one, so we're good.
Okay, good.
All right, there's no other discussion on Resolution Number 2017-12. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Motion passes. Next item is Resolution 2017-13, Designating a Nonprofit Agency as the Grant Administrator. And the, that resolution basically deems Central Arkansas Planning and Development, who's also been working on this project with us and helped with the previous meeting, and their, their payment for their services would come out of the grant money. So it would not be a contract that we had with them directly. I mean, we'd have a contract with them, but it'd be paid for out of the grant proceeds.
Okay. Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, these were the, or these, there were two people, I think, at that one meeting, and that was, that was them. And I'm a little unclear, was this a government entity? Is it a nonprofit entity? What is it?
They're kind of both. They're a quasi-government entity. So there's eight planning districts throughout the state of Arkansas, and they're, they're put in place by state law. And then, so, most of them, well, all the mayors and the county judges serve as their board for that county area, for that region area.
Okay, so we've got elected officials that are on the board?
That are on the board, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Including the mayor, by any chance? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I go to a meeting every quarter there, so...
All right.
Well, when I can make it, but yeah, I do try to go every quarter.
Okay, I just wasn't sure. I had written a big question here, was who are these people?
Well, there's, there's, and they work on grants, and they do other things, they do job creation, workforce, so they're, they're more than just grant administrators and that sort of thing. But they're the kind of the, they act as federal liaisons, is what they do. They understand these grant processes better than the local jurisdictions do, and very knowledgeable in that aspect of it. Their offices are in Lone Oak, Arkansas, is where they're located at, so. And then, like, I know there's White River Planning Jurisdiction that's up around Batesville, and, you know, there's Southeast Arkansas, down in Monocell area, so they're all, they operate basically the same.
Okay, and so, so this is a very appropriate entity to be doing this, and there's not some other entity that would be competing to try to do this?
Well, there's probably consultants out there that would want to do it for you, but they're going to do it at a better rate, because basically, you're just trying to cover their salary and not a profit margin.
Okay.
And their operating costs, so, yeah.
It's not something that has to be bid at?
All right. No, no, it does not.
Thank you.
Alderman Timmons?
So at the point that they don't get the grant, then we don't have to pay them anything, right?
That's correct. It's all contingent on getting the grant.
Okay, okay. The reason I asked is, I remember years ago, we paid somebody $20,000 to get us a grant, and by the end of the year, and they didn't get us anything, and they came back the year after saying, "Do you want to pay us again?"
And that's a consultant, that's a private business that's out there trying to get grants for you, and they're, they're asking for a retainage fee, basically, is what they're asking for. But that's not the case with Central Arkansas Planning and Development.
Okay. Alderman Mosley?
Along with your question, if, if we get the grant, but we decide not to utilize it, if there's too big of a match or something like that, again, we don't owe them anything.
Uh-uh, no.
Motion to approve Resolution 27-13.
Second. Go ahead.
Well...
Oh, you didn't read it?
All right, let's read it then. Let's read it first.
A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas. Resolution 2017-13, Designating a Nonprofit Agency as a Community Development Block Grant Administrator.
Okay, now Alderman Vaperson?
Motion to approve 2017-13.
Go ahead.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2017-13. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Motion passes. Moving on to Mayor's comments. Don't forget, we have a Memorial Day service that will be May the 29th at 10:00 AM at the Veterans Memorial at Lake Willistine. We really would appreciate everybody coming out that can to that event. A lot of hard work's been put into planning it, and Bubba Beeson is going to be the featured speaker, and if you don't know who that is, he's retired from the Air Force, but he brings the flags to Mammell every year, the Field of Flags, to honor the fallen servicemen and women that have passed since 2011 that have Arkansas connections. Next item is NWS Reports for April 29th and 30th. There's only one thing of interest in there, then that's why I put them in your packet, and I didn't really know how to cut it off without making it look really funny, so I gave you six pages. But if you really just look at... But if you really just look at, uh, page, uh, five, it is. North Rock, North Rock Airport, where the, where the weather service is, set record rainfall events for short-duration rainfall. So, uh, it talks about in ten minutes, one point one seven inches of rain fell between eleven-twenty and eleven-thirty. Between eleven-twenty and eleven-thirty-five, one point five-five inches of rain fell. And so at the North Rock Airport, rain came down in buckets, is what the statement says. And at a record pace, a staggering one point five-five inches of water fell fifteen, fell in fifteen minutes with two point one-seven inches in thirty minutes. Uh, the National Weather Service in the North Rock Airport is eight miles from Marmel. So it came down in buckets here, it too, 'cause there's no doubt in my mind. I saw it, I was there, but just wanted that to be pointed out, that I don't care what kinda storm system you have, it cannot handle that type of water, um, in that shorter duration. And, and in about a hundred and fifty minutes, they're saying three point five-five inches fell at the North Rock Airport. So, and it, it actually, they're saying till one fifty-five. At about one o'clock is when it quit raining here, so it still took it another fifty-five minutes to stop raining. Over there, only eight miles away, so, you know. And that night, we had about, uh, four and a half to five and a half inches of rain in various parts of Marmel. I talked to people with, uh, rain gauges, and that's what they'd told me. And then there was a, uh, there's the National Weather Service has a, I forget what they're calling them, they're not a spotter, but they're a weather person that provides data to the weather service, and they had four point five in their rain gauge. And, uh, you got your light on, is it for mayor's comments, or for that? Okay, okay, yes, sir. Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I would just, you know, we, you've, you've, uh, instructed the city to, uh, do a lot of brush clearing down there under that overpass. Do you feel like that that helped prevent some flooding this time? Do you have any feel at all on that? Does, is it, we were trying to keep the water from being slowed down?
Right, and, and I would say yes to a point, but a dead tree fell, and so we did have a blockage down there that we've had to remove now. So, you know, a, a tree somehow got in there, and, and I'm not gonna say that it hurt, or, I don't, you don't know, I don't know when it fails, the problem. So, you know, there was one dead log in the, in the creek, and then a bunch of leaves were trapped up against it. So when we went down the following week, there was a blockage down there that we've now removed, again. And we cut down a couple of more trees that looked like they were gonna fall because their roots had been eroded out, exposed and all that. So we took out two other trees in additional while we were down there. Now, you know, were, was it just because it quit raining when it quit raining? Or, or, you know, but yeah, we kept that area as clean as we can. And we're actually gonna try to get in there this summer when it's, uh, very dry, and try to do a little more, uh, removal of some big rocks and things like that, that we can't get out of there with just people lifting them up. That, where they're coming from, I don't know, but there's large rocks down there, so.
But I feel like we're doing about all we can do.
What?
And, and so I'm, I was very pleased to see that, uh, those apartments didn't get flooded and all that. Uh, it would be nice if the owners of those facilities would warn their folks about taking their cars to high ground when there's heavy rain warnings and.
Well, or just if they'd just be good neighbors, and if, if you go move your car, let your neighbor know to move their car. You know, I mean, you know, that's, that too. I agree, the management should need to do something. Uh, and there's a new management company down, or new owners, they've actually, it sold back in March, or something like that.
Windsor?
At Windsor, yeah. So, uh, I may need to reach out to them. They may not be aware of it.
Right.
The new owners may not be. They may be now, but they might not have been the night that that occurred.
We took a lot of heat, uh, when was that, a couple of years ago?
In fourteen, August of fourteen, yeah.
And, uh, I think a lot of it's, uh, these entities need to be a little bit more open with their residents about their cars. Thank you.
All right, uh, I need to tell y'all, it's not on my mayor's comments, because I just kinda, it was official today, but I need to let y'all know, but, uh, based on resolution two thousand twelve dash, I can't remember it, I can't get to it, uh, two thousand twelve dash thirteen, uh, basically it says that if, uh, now, how's the easy way to say this? Uh, if a department head or head of such a department hires a person within the third degree for part-time and seasonal work, that is allowed. So in the event that such a person is hired for part-time and seasonal work, the mayor shall notify the city council of that hiring decision. So basically, I just wanna let y'all know that Shelby Rayburn, who is Philip Rayburn's daughter, is going to be a lifeguard at the pool this summer. So it's a seasonal job, it's a part-time job, and she got her certification over the weekend, so now she can be a lifeguard. But the, uh, the chain of command for that, it would be the following. So there'd be a head lifeguard, there'd be a pool manager, and then the assistant parks and recreation director is over that. So it would not be even a direct relation up to the department head status on that aspect. So, uh, just letting y'all know that, uh, that's what it says, is I'm supposed to inform y'all of that. Yeah.
This, this isn't the first time she's been hired since?
No, no, this is not the first time. You know, she, she's worked there in the past. I think it was in, uh, twenty fifteen, she also worked there. And then we've had other instances where, uh, family members of, uh, city council have worked there also.
I think everybody, every child has worked there.
And, and we hired, uh, we, I think we've hired everybody that applied as a lifeguard that's been certified. So it's not like we picked her over somebody, 'cause we're needing lifeguards, so we've hired them all. I believe that's correct.
Well, the ones that got under the?
Yeah, under the deadlines, yes, yes. Yeah. We hired all returning lifeguards from last year that were in good standing, and all new lifeguard operation, all new lifeguard applications that were turned in before the deadline were also hired. So we've hired all the lifeguards that basically have applied and qualified. And then the only other thing I wanna, uh, mention is, I mentioned it in my prayer, but, uh, Pastor David Ward passed away last Wednesday. He was the pastor at Day Springs Baptist Church, just outside the city. But he lived in Marmel, was a member of the Lions Club, I think he was president of the Lions Club for a little while. Uh, just a, a great citizen from Marmel, and, uh, so his memorial service is Saturday morning at ten o'clock at Day Springs Baptist Church. So if you've had ever, any, had any interaction with him, he's a great person, and, uh, he'll be missed by his church and by this community. And that's all I have. Uh, Planning Commission report will be done at the next meeting. Alderman's comments? All right, Mr. City Attorney?
No, sir.
Madam City Clerk?
No.
Okay, the only other thing I have then is the Arkansas Municipal League Summer Convention registration, we have to have it in by June first. If you want it in, you need to contact Ms. Timmons before June first. It'll be June fourteenth, this fifteenth and sixteenth.
Is it in Little Rock?
It's in Little Rock, yes. Yeah, it's at the State House Convention Center, yeah.
Did we just let you know, Tina, or is it, or do you need?
If you could email me.
An email, okay.
Are you, are you letting me know now?
Yeah, yeah.
So you don't have to email me.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no other business to come before the council, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
motion offered.
Your second? All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Meeting's adjourned.
So when I worked at Radio Shack, somebody came in, they.